The order of the meeting of the board is second.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will start as usual with public comment if anyone has a comment.
Senator Brookwood in Greystone, Cleveland, I just wanted to make a quick comment about Ms. Zinright's presentation before the fact. I looked at her packet and I'm so impressed by all the progress that she's made that project has been a long time in the making and it's going to be our newest and I think a really great trail for us which will tie the growing Mill District to some of our other recreational activities. It's going to be a great thing and she's doing just a wonderful job, so I'm really happy to see all the progress that's being made there and look forward to being able to walk that trail in the near future.
Okay, thank you.
You know what's amazing about that trail? Because when you describe it, it's hard to envision, so how is this going to end up? All over it. So like I was flipping through the pages and he's like, okay, all right, let me follow.
It was sort of a, it was put together sort of like a jigsaw puzzle. Pieces all fit together and finally made a trail.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment? No, okay. First item is approval of our minutes. We have our January 22nd executive session minutes.
Motion to approve of January 22nd open session minutes.
Executive session, sorry.
Executive session, I'm sorry.
A second?
On favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And now we have our February 11th minutes.
Motion to approve of the February 11th open session minutes.
Second?
On favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is our governmental reports section, so we have quite a few updates this week. As Mr. Limpert alluded to, the first item is an update on the Mills to Hills Trail, which I actually asked Megan and Jean to give us a brief update. I don't know if you guys read about this in your, in the budget packet, but there was progress, significant progress made on this and reflected in the budget and I was really excited to see it as well, so I wanted to just get an update for the public on this great project. Thanks, Jean.
So as Stan indicated, this project was approved in 2014's town meeting through CPC funding. I would say it's probably hit more roadblocks than I can count. So in October, I picked it up trying to put a team together, so I've been working with the Department of Public Works, John Bojazie and Curtis Johnson. Jennifer Hughes has helped quite a bit from the conservation perspective and we've been working with town council to get through some of the legal documents that will be necessary. So the trail, as indicated, it runs from the Mills, essentially adjacent to Stachi's restaurant, joins up with the existing stone dust path that circles the pond today. We will add a stone dust jog off of that up to Walker Road. Again, one version of this had that path really running along the Kachuk Brook, which was problematic. We really couldn't permit it there. So this is actually within the right of way of Walker Road, which is a private road. It'll come off the paved area about three feet. It takes very little clearing. It's really a wide open area today. A little bit of brush cutting as you approach the overpass to the high school. I had heard some concern earlier on when this was brought before Walker Road that some residents may have had concerns, so we did hold a public meeting in November. Only two residents appeared at the hearing, at the meeting, but they offered some good perspective. There's, there's going to be dogs walking on this trail, we imagine, so we're going to add some passway stations, a barrel. Their primary concern was really about litter and rubbish. I would anticipate a lot of it was coming from McDonald's as kids either walk to or from school. Not a lot we could do about that. We're sensitive to it. Just adding a barrel along this path, I think, will help some of it. So the meeting went well, like I said, not very well attended. I did receive some calls and, you know, once I explained it, there was really no other concerns raised.
Jean, is the trail going to go through the high school?
It's going to go over the overpass and then, once it comes off the overpass, rather than taking, of the orientation, rather than going up towards the high school, it'll actually go to the backside of the fields.
Okay.
And again, that will be constructed. This was the one area that required some survey work and civil engineering, so John Bojazie really oversaw that process. It'll require one area with some large stones laid, but it'll be a stone dust path, same thing. I think it'll really provide, the width of it, we're going to try to get up to six to eight feet if possible. So a lot of the lacrosse or soccer teams that play on that outside field, a lot of the parents today stand on the outside of this, so we would anticipate they'll still be able to stand out there, but won't make it wide enough that trail access will still be unimpeded.
There won't be any issues with dogs because I know on the school property, there's not supposed to be dogs.
So I listed here, this went to the school committee back in, I think, 2014 and they voted their support with some conditions, one of which would be no pets on that section of the trail. So there's no pets really on that whole property. So those are minor conditions about, we'll do it at our cost, we'll maintain it and there'll be no pets and there'll be signage for that. The trail will come out along the baseball field and join up with the existing sidewalk to the Osgood Street. Once it hits Osgood Street, it will just go up Osgood Street about 10 feet, we'll have wayfinding signage to cross there and enter the trustees of reservations land. We've walked the site a couple of times there. It'll really hug the stone wall as you head up and almost loop back and the reason for that is there are wetlands. There will need to be a bridge constructed to cross the stream there, very similar to a lot of the trails within Wire Hill and Mizarenko Farm has a bridge similar. Once you come out, you'll be dead right across from the trail to Wire Hill, adjacent to the parking lot.
It's unfortunate about the no pets because if folks want to walk, walk from downtown, you know, to go to the, to that area, they, what are they going to do? They can't, they're dark, they sit there for a little while.
Yeah, so the alternative would to, I guess, head up 125 and cross through like Pleasant Street area and take the longer road on existing streets. I agree, I have a pet.
Will signage that indicate no pets, will there be signage at least at the overpass indicate that if you have a pet?
Yeah, so we haven't developed the signage, but yeah, we'll have to give them notice before getting on that overpass and we would do it again, I think, on, as you come off it.
Yeah, because when they come off the overpass, they're on the school property, right? So it has to be before they even get onto it.
I like it though, if the other thing it does, it sort of cleans up that area, the school property, it's kind of, kind of why, you know, it's, it's not really wetlands there, but it's sort of overgrown and I think that'll, I think that'll add to it and certainly kind of making the area behind the diamond more functional because that's always kind of rained out.
It's better defined and, and like you said, more functional, it will compact the stone dust to a certain spec.
No, it's, and the other thing is, I think, for those folks that, you know, are watching this a little bit, this is the sort of things that are coming out of our master plan too. There are opportunities like this all over our community and really now is the time we can start capitalizing on it. We see the priorities, right?
Yep, definitely. I will make a note on the trustees land, that will be a manmade path, so that will not be stone dust, but similar to anybody that walks the man's trail from the common up across Academy Road and down to Pleasant Street. It'll take a little bit of work to establish that section of the trail, but that's all in the plan.
Great, awesome.
Great, thank you so much. I'm really excited about this, really excited about this project. It's great.
Thank you for putting it up.
Thanks, Jean.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jean.
Next item on our agenda is an update on the senior center. I know that Megan's out of town, so.
So she prepared an outline of where the senior center is presently. So the senior center is finalizing the schematic design with the architect. The schematic design is the first phase of the whole design of the whole project. The program for the interior of the building has been finalized and remains consistent with the approval of town meeting, which is the 13.5 square feet with 80 parking spots. Multiple versions of the program and the elevation of proposed building have been reviewed and modified to meet the capital improvement plan. The current program is moving forward, including the building of approximately 13.8 square feet with 80 associated parking spots, eight of which will be handicap parking, which will be in the front of the actual building. The program has, is attached, which, there was a schematic attached in your package showing the outline of the building and it is anticipated the schematic design for the proposed senior center will be finalized for your March 11th meeting to review and vote on. The town continues to work with MinCo to figure out the actual property site plan development and the actual property lines and layout, so that we're working with Suzanne and MinCo to get that finalized, which will accommodate 136 units in the senior center building. The following schematic design presentation to the board, the architect will proceed with the development of the building and the site plan permit and present the project is slightly behind schedule unfortunately because of the delays as far as the property lines and the layout and the schematics because we've gotten several different versions. So it's a little bit behind, but the project is expected to go out to bid by the end of this fiscal year and then go out for construction by the fall. So there's still, you know, the time for, it will come back to the board to make their comments and suggestions on the actual building and all of that.
The one question that I have, because this is actually coming up and actually up in residential properties, that the new openness makes it noisy and particularly for a senior center, you want to make sure that they can hear really well. Has there been any discussion about the acoustics of all the open space or anything?
With inside, you mean, the building?
With inside, yeah.
I don't know, I haven't seen the actual layout for the inside. That would be something I could defer to Megan and get some further information for you.
Yeah, just to see how that might, could be rugs, it could be a whole bunch of things.
Yeah, I do know that, you know, there was many staff members involved in helping to plan the layout of the inside as well as looking at several other developments made by, for senior centers in different communities.
I would just ask that we check to see if they made any concerns or recommendations or on acoustics inside the building.
Okay.
Because it is so nice and open, which is great, but again, sometimes that can have noise problems.
Absolutely.
So are you thinking that?
Do you know on that? Do you do? Could you respond?
So the progress process, we did visit two other senior centers and I don't know the name of the material, but certainly in the multi-family, not multi-family, the multipurpose room, the ceiling and the upper walls all have acoustical type material, you know, sound material.
Okay.
And the fitness room as well, the floor and the ceiling.
Because they might be yelling a lot in the fitness room.
They're groaning, moaning.
Yeah, I would say the architect has definitely built that in, that he cautions us a lot of time about hearing impaired versus. Exactly.
Yeah, everything from chair rails, like he's, he's always pointing to why we would want this type of detail. So we can get you more information on the material itself.
Yeah, you could just get us a comment that that seems to be well taken care of. But yeah, it's, it's not just in public buildings, they're finding it because everyone wants open, open houses that they're living in houses that are quite loud now, so.
At the March 11th meeting, we'll provide that.
Great, thank you.
In this schematic that we have in our packets is, the one on the left is obviously the first floor and the one on the right, the top floor, but it, so it looks like the one on the left, and sorry, we don't have this projected, but I'm assuming that's like a multi, a two-story open space, that's why there's nothing above it?
Right, so if you look at the fitness room?
Right.
That will actually look down on the multi-use room.
Onto the multi, okay. So that's to your point, that's going to be a tall, open space room, so the rest of them don't look as big.
And as the consultant said, or the architect said, there are some people that are hearing impaired and, you know, we certainly want to make it enjoyable for everybody who works there and goes there.
Great, sounds like he's already on it.
We've definitely discussed it.
Or she is already on it, yeah.
Yeah, he, at the March 11th, we'll make sure he explains to you the provisions put in to the material.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jean.
All right. Any other questions or we could probably get into more detail on this one when Megan's back? Okay. And now we'll move on to an update on the recreation complex. D has prepared something.
So I would like to publicly recognize Rick Green, who has been providing me with extremely comprehensive and very up-to-date notes on where the project is as well as the meetings that I've attended. So Rick met with Waterfield Design Group last, on February 14th, to discuss some of the outstanding design issues and out of that came a few results. The abutters had presented some concern about the lighting. So the planning board will have two site visits, actually this week, on Wednesday evening at Merrimack College and then on Thursday evening at the Greater Lawrence Vocational School, so they can look at the lighting and how the lighting is projected off of the field and the impact that it has on the surrounding area. So that was something that came out of the meetings with the abutters and so the planning board will have the opportunity to look at projects that this company has done to see how they've addressed concern from the abutters. The surveillance system, Waterfield is working with the police department as well as the town's vendor and that will continue as the design gets more solidified. They'll look at the different logical locations for the different security issues. One of the issues was the construction vehicles, so no construction vehicles will be allowed on the side streets. That was important to the abutters and that's something that was recognized by Waterfield in the town as something that's very important. The temporary staging area for the construction vehicles is going to be relocated so there'll be no impact on the Fourth of July fireworks. So that was something that came out of that meeting as well. And then the artificial turf, there was some question on that and Rick Gorman will be working with the school athletic director as well as Jim Mealy to talk about the turf that was installed in the high school and, you know, whether or not that's the best, you know, material to use on, on this location as well. Updates on the, where this project is at with the Conservation Commission and the planning board. Waterfield submitted additional information for peer review and they closed out of all the comments. So Waterfield was in discussion with Jennifer Hughes, the conservation agent, and they've resolved all of the comments that she had on the proposal. It's on the Conservation Commission's agenda for this Wednesday and barring any additional comments or issues, we expect that the hearing will be closed at that time. And as I said, there are two site visits that will take place again this week. In terms of the fundraising, Rick has been in touch with an attorney and a CPA to discuss the relationship between the Herman Youth Center and their foundation and then this account and whether or not, you know, the accounting needs to be separated and how that would work functionally. And this will be presented to the board, the Herman Board, for a vote at their March 6th meeting. So the fundraising effort is continuing. They are in discussions with Richard Blain and Associates on a fundraising scheme and how to meet those goals and then once they have a plan for the accounting mechanism, then they'll really launch into full steam ahead. And I listened to a podcast today that Rick Green and Terry Holland did and it's really great. If you want the history of the project and, you know, really where it's been, where it's going, what's going to be involved in the project, what are the actual elements of the project, it's really something that you should listen to and it's available on the town's website, the Youth and Rec Department. And then finally, Rick and Rick myself will be meeting with Regina to look at creating a webpage for the complex project that will have diagrams and questions and answers and a mechanism for people, if they have questions, to put those into the town to get some responses. This is such a large project, largest in the state as a matter of fact, so we want to make sure that the community is well aware of what's going on, the project, where it's at and just the timeline for construction going forward.
Thank you.
I just would add two things, just to make everyone be aware. The fact that we have not completed the planning board meetings yet means we're a little bit behind the schedule. If you were keeping track of whatever we said six months ago our schedule would be, we're a little bit behind schedule, so not that it's a huge deal, but I think this puts us one meeting past where we thought we would be, so just to make people aware in case we're, we've communicated out the schedule to folks over time. I'd just like to make note when we're perhaps slipping from that. And the other thing I would note, you mentioned the sort of new driveway for the construction vehicles, so they're not going onto the neighborhood streets. I just want to also point out they will not be going through the school drop-off area, which is a big concern, through the Atkinson Playground work that was done, so I just want to make people be aware that that will also avoid construction vehicles through the school drop-off areas. And I don't know if anyone has any questions on that point, on that update, but I was going to suggest perhaps we could go out of order and talk about the other middle school fields or rec complex item on the agenda, which we have under New Business, but since we're talking about it, I'd just assume move it up if everyone's fine with that. Okay. So under New Business, we have a discussion regarding options for sponsor, sponsorship and advertising. So as Dee mentioned, we've got the fundraising group in place to do the, the private fundraising that needs to be done for a portion of the funds for the project. And obviously, as this group is going out to try and solicit donations, they need some guidance from us as to what they could give the sponsors as a way to recognize them for their contribution. So in your packet, you have a link to an email that Rick Green provided with some of the ideas that the group has thought of and I don't think that we need, I wasn't planning on us voting on this tonight, but I was planning on us having a discussion and starting to talk about some of these ideas so we can be thinking about them, going off on our own and doing some research and seeing what these things might look like and perhaps in our next meeting, voting on a set of things that we could allow them to use when they're going to talk to possible donors, potential donors. So I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at that list and have some initial thoughts?
Yeah, so I mean, this would be for folks who just in generally donated, this wouldn't be for people who want to consistently advertise at the field as a, as a consistent form of revenue, right? This would be more for people who have donated to, to build the field and what, what will memorialize that donation.
Right, this is if someone says, here's, you know, $20,000. We want to give them something in return.
Right, so that's my, so it's not like.
No, they get something. We don't give them, they get.
They get something, right, of course. So you're better at this than me.
It's not an ongoing advertising opportunity, no.
No, it is not, it's a, it's a thing to recognize the contribution.
I mean, have we, let me see if it's on here, like a donor wall, like with different levels of.
Number three.
Number three, a donor wall. There it is. With different levels of like platinum, gold or whatever donations that would memorialize how much was given and where they, where they position on that wall. And I like the pavers, I think pavers are, are nice, people like to go and, you know, kind of look at the pavers and find their names on the pavers and I think that's something that is generally generational also, you know, people can go back and look at, oh, that was my grandmother's or my mother's or something like that, so I like that as well.
Well, we did, you know, at the, at Walsh Stadium, of course, we've got the, the wall there with the, with the tile, so, you know, I think there's, there's a tradition already in our town that's tastefully done, so, and when you start to count up those tiles, like, wow, that's a lot of families, so I can see, I can see a lot of opportunities here. I guess conceptionally, I look at this and go, I'm not sure that there's much we'd want to disqualify because the other part of this is you don't know what the proposals are in front of us and I guess I would want Rick and, and the folks that are doing this to really have, I guess it's like a search, you know, we ultimately can always say no, but let's say yes as much as we can to get the proposals in, to see what's going and then sort of filter through it, if you're willing to do the work. I mean, kind of giving you a broad opening does put a little more on your shoulders, but I also think we want to, I'd love to see us to be as open as possible because sometimes you get some very creative ideas that may push sort of traditional perspective, but ultimately what we're, what we're looking for is not just any old sponsor, but we really would love to have people that have some tie to this community, that there's a, there's sort of a permanent legacy of their sponsoring this. It's not just, hey, we've got the money this year and let's just, just put it in. That's wonderful, but hopefully we can motivate some people to really think hard about being part of a, an institution that we're now establishing.
The only thing is we have to just be very, very sensitive to that when we started this project and I'm sure Rick can get into this, to the neighbors, that it was not going to become commercialized. That's been from the very beginning, so in our effort to raise money, we have to, and you didn't say that, so I'm not criticizing you, but I think to let people know who are watching that this, we did make a promise to the neighbors, we had many, many meetings and we just want to make sure that we make it a lovely park and not an advertising place.
Yeah. So how, how in detail, I, like I could see us going down, it looks like a dozen and a half rabbit holes and I appreciate that Rick, Rick put all this together.
Good rabbit holes or bad rabbit holes?
Well, I guess, like, I, well, I guess it depends. I mean, I enjoy spending the night with you guys, so we can stay till midnight and probably tackle like two or, well, I guess I just want to understand the scope of what, what this discussion is. Are we talking about, like Rick and the committee need guidance from us. Do we have to, do we feel at this meeting comfortable giving him any guidance or any idea of what that future meeting would, like I really could imagine us having several meetings about.
I, I guess I felt like, for me, there are certain things I really don't want to see there and if we all know we don't want to see a certain thing there, it would be nice to let him know now.
So what are those?
That. Yeah, Rick, please.
I can put it on the list.
Give him a list of things that I want you to know.
Again, the list you have in front of you is just some suggestions that through the public meetings we had, through Terry Holland, myself, Rosemary, I just put a culmination together and at the time was to speak with Andrew Mailer about which way we wanted to go in terms of what, what do we think is acceptable that we want to see in this facility other than big banners with advertising on it? So these are just some suggestions. It would be nice for us, once we get into the actual fundraising, to be able to have some guidelines as to what we can offer donors and that might not necessarily be on the amount of their contributions, but what can we offer them? And we want to make sure it's as tasteful as, as possible and like Rosemary said, we did make a commitment to the abutters and the residents of North Andover that these, any advertising we had would be, you know, not intrusive on the facility, but, you know, something we could recognize them for and that's why you see, you don't see really anything that says banners or billboards like that. So that's, any guidance you can give us would be helpful. I'm not saying you have to approve anything on here, but guidance so that we can try to establish something as we move forward with the fundraising campaign.
So since I, I said there are things I don't want to see, I will start. I personally don't think we should have signs with logos like on the fences or on banners or whatever, like logos painted on the field, on signs on the fences, whatever. I like the idea more of natural things that have a name etched in them, so a donor wall, a bench, a paver, you know, benches along the walk, signs in a picnic area.
Yeah, we spoke about like street signs.
Whatever, those kinds of things. Yeah, garden area sponsored by whoever, whatever, things like that are fine for me, but I just don't think we want to see like, when, you know.
Banners on follow and dot oppose.
Yeah, yeah.
Words along multipurpose corners. Company logo on multipurpose.
And that's in, in line with what we've talked to the neighbors about, that they would really be upset if there was a lot of advertisement that was, it's supposed to be a pretty place too, not.
I absolutely, absolutely understand all that, but let's do a little bit of basic math. Let's say that, we'll just pick a number there, let's say $600,000 needs to be generated through just these sort of sponsorships. At $20,000, that means you need 30 sponsorships, right? Getting 30 institutions, people to say, this little brick or that little piece in the walk represents your contribution, and again, I'm just throwing an ax at it. The little experience I've had with this, and it was years ago, and my experience in driving around seeing fields all throughout New England, I think that's a tall order to put on the table and I agree with you in terms of trying to make it as tasteful as possible, but I think we also have to recognize that it is also a financial proposition to whoever is going to contribute. And again, when you break it down and you see how that's going to be manifested, I want to give you as much opportunity for that because obviously if that $600,000, again, just grab a number out of the air, you could do that with 20 or 10. Is that more advantageous for us net-net in many ways? So that's just a consideration here.
That was always my concern. I, is it possible to agree with both? I don't want to see logos, but that was always the concern that I had with the daunting task before, before this committee and you can't control. And you can't control that. We can have that discussion. What jumps to mind to me is we have the Adopt an Island program in town, and a lot of communities have that. And some communities actually have each sponsoring business's logo. They get to literally design their own sign on their sponsorship. And North Andover has one where everybody gets the same font and the same writing, and it has a classier look to it. I mean, I, so I would shy away from logos. I also can think of businesses in town that are very generous and have been very generous, that have changed their logos multiple times over the past several years. And so that in of itself becomes a headache for them as much as it is for us. I mean, nobody wants to look at an old logo they, most of all, if their business that changes it.
Correct.
I would be eager to hear the feedback, but I would be inclined to say, let's shy away from the logos. Perhaps the banners are similar to Cal Thomas, the signs around the outfield. Maybe that becomes a long-term fundraising option for the maintenance of the field, the same way that it is, but Cal Thomas, but I would rather not see logos.
That was one of the things that we've talked about not having. Cal Thomas is a little bit different. It's been there since time immemorial, but it also, it backs up more towards the highway. This is really in the, it's been beautiful, open space for years. I also worry a little bit too. There's so many schools in that immediate area that there's something uncomfortable about having that be a part of what they have to look at all the time. I think they get enough advertisement on TV and everything else. I agree with Regina, this is supposed to be, and do the neighbors, believe me, they were very, very strong about this in particular, that you want it to be a beautiful place. I mean, here we are, having wonderful trails and beautiful places that is natural and welcoming, but I have to strongly say that I would absolutely be against anything is big banners or placards or signs around the park. And I think we would have trouble because I think the neighbors would really, they'd be speaking out, but...
Yeah. And with that said, I think, and I like the first three pavers, granite benches and donor wall. I mean, I think those are very tasteful. Even granite benches, you know, my first thinking, my first thoughts were, you know, we like to reserve those for special people in town to dedicate those to those people. But, you know, there's also opportunities to have those as a sponsorship item and, you know, a good amount there to get a granite bench with your name on it and, you know, maybe you're, you know, someone who passed away recently in your family and you want a memorial to them or something like that.
I agree with you on that.
So those are, I think those are all good. And I do agree with my fellow members here about the, those who have stated it about the signs and the banners and everything. I think that may be pushing it a little bit for, well, I think, once we reach or sign the agreement with Richard Blaine to actually start the fundraising campaign, we're going to meet with him again, and I can get a better idea of what he thinks would be good, and I can come back to the board with a more solidified list as of what we would really like to do. This was just more suggestions to throw things out to see what, you know, may be acceptable and what may not. So I can certainly come back to the board after we get, reach an agreement with the consultant.
Would it be possible to have, take the feedback that you got from us, have him look at what you've put together and even consider other suggestions that maybe weren't on here?
Yep.
And just with his experience, being able to just elaborate a little bit more, like flags on a flagpole, we might all be picturing things a little bit differently than what he has in mind. And there might be actual existing examples that show it's not as commercialized as it appears. I mean, my gut reaction is no, but I don't want to, I don't think any of us want to stop you from an avenue of raising funds that, just because we, it's not being explained correctly or we're all picturing things differently than the way that you could actually have it, where it can be done tastefully, or by our definition, I suppose, of tasteful. So that would be helpful in that sense.
Yeah, that's no problem. I really never got into discussion with Rick Blaine yet about this list. This was generated back, I think, November, just to get an idea from the town manager as to what he was looking at. So certainly, once we sign the agreement with Richard Blaine, we'll speak with him and we'll get a more refined list that we can present to you for consideration.
For that reason, I would think we would want to delay a vote until we...
Oh, yeah. I wasn't planning, this was just, I had this under new business for like a first discussion, so just to give you feedback of how everyone's thinking and then, yeah, you can come back once you meet with him and have more...
Madam Chair, I think we should probably speak with Suzanne, Town Council as well, and find out if there's any issues with freedom of speech or anything like that as to what we might be putting up.
What can actually go on?
What can we do and what can't we do? So we can ask for her opinion on that and report back.
There are other issues.
Okay.
Yeah. Very powerful. Freedom of speech is hugely powerful. We don't want to be on the wrong side.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Thanks for everything you've done too.
Thank you.
Very exciting.
It is, Jerry.
A lot of work.
Okay. Next up, we have an update on the Stevens Estate. So I think, as everyone knows, we sent an RFP out. And the responses were due February 13th, so we have an update on that.
Okay, so we, the RFP went out as scheduled, and we got the responses back on February 13th. There were actually 27 people that looked at the RFP, but we only got one response back. So when we received the response, it was from Elegant Banquets LLC. They're out of Connecticut, a Connecticut organization which has five different event venues. If you were to Google them and look at them online, they're, the event, the venues that they have are gorgeous. They know what they're doing. They've structured them, a lot of them are the older buildings like the Stevens Estate. The RFP had minimum requirements for the submittal, but it failed to submit the specific components of the RFP, so we declined the proposal. Megan has been in contact with them and explained to them why we declined the proposal, but that we're going to go back out with a new RFP with some different specifics, and we expect that they will be responding as well. When Megan gets back, she'll work with, you know, putting that together and getting it out and posted with Laurie, so we can get some additional responses, and they'll be able to comply and respond to the RFP in detail, more so to the specifics. I think they're not accustomed to probably dealing with municipal RFPs and the requirements that they have to meet every criteria within there or we can decline it, so...
This, this company, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at any of their stuff, but they have, they have actually done, taken like an old JP Morgan estate and converted it into a banquet place, and it's beautifully done. I mean, beautifully done. So I think something like that would be really, really interesting for us, especially given what we heard in our last meeting with the budget and the situation of the Stevens Estate really not being able to maintain itself with the maintenance it's going to need over time. So that would be exciting. I think the one kind of negative thing about this fact is that to do anything, we're going to have to take this to town meeting. And we obviously will not make, I don't think we'll make a town meeting.
I don't think so.
This town meeting, if we're going to have to reissue the RFP, wait for a new response and then discuss, because most likely, this will either involve a long-term lease or at least dividing the lot, conserving the land, so on.
We're going to do the restriction. We remove the 40 hour, no.
The restriction will be on this town meeting though.
The restriction will be...
As far as I know, I double-checked with Suzanne, but we talked about getting the restriction on so that that, you know...
Okay.
May not agree with all...
That would be great. Would we need town meeting, would it go to town meeting if we were to do a long-term lease for the...
It will, definitely. So, and from what I understand, the company that had responded was aware of the timelines and things, and they're not concerned that it would be mixed made.
Okay. That was my concern, if they were like, oh, well, we don't want to wait a year.
Such a huge hurdle, meet all that time.
Right. I would guess, yeah.
So, and I should know the answer to this. So say we get a couple of proposals and they meet our conditions. It's still subject to town meeting. It doesn't mean we have to accept that, even though it meets the conditions. Usually...
Right. It has to go to town meeting.
It's still, no matter what, has to go to town meeting.
Right. To decide what we want to do with it.
Okay. Because usually, we just go with the lowest bidder, but this, in this particular case, it's a little stickier, but I just don't want to feel as though we're committed.
Well, I don't think town meeting is the body that would actually pick the company that do what we want with the facility.
Right, I agree.
We would pick the company, and then we'd have to go to town meeting to propose the change in the lease, if it's a lease or sale.
All right. You've just sort of reaffirmed what I was thinking, but...
But we would not be forced to pick...
I have a question about the mechanism for that, though. Why, we exercise the right of first refusal all the time as selectmen. Why, maybe there's an obvious answer. Why do we need town meeting's approval for, just in general, for a sale or lease?
For a sale of a property, municipal property?
Yeah.
I don't know the specific Mass General Law, but it is required that town meeting vote if we're going to sell a piece of property. If you remember the Bradstreet School.
A piece of land.
A piece of land or building. Either or. I mean, we do have to go to town meeting to get their approval to sell the property.
Which makes sense. We have to, well, not for town meeting, but...
Yes, and change the zoning.
The zoning, yeah.
Well, the zoning I would see, but more just because you said specifically about the lease or sale.
For Bradstreet, I think we had custodial rights of that, and we were able to sell that.
But do we already have the vote ahead of time? I, like you, I'm sort of a little foggy.
We did. I believe we did.
Maybe we would, so county attorney on what, what the process is.
Because we, I mean, we as a board vote all the time to put vehicles, so not land property or building property, but certainly town property up for auction all the time. So it's town property, so that's, I was...
Yeah, it's a little confusing.
My angle is only just to understand it, to understand why, why it's town meeting that exercises that right and not just the board as, we do not have a property case.
Well, it depends on what type, when you're saying the sale of property, you mean like when we sell surplus property and things like that?
Well, that's, so we put up vehicles for auction.
Like vehicles or small assets like that?
That's not a, that's not standing...
It's a foreclosed property, are you referring to? No?
No, I'm just, I mean, anything the town owns. So is there a distinction for land?
She's talking about real property.
I'm talking about real property. Right.
So just a backup question for a second. So there were 27 people, institutions that looked at it. Do we know who they were?
Megan would know who they are.
So it might be interesting, you know, it's kind of a little project, to find out from, maybe sample them. You looked at it, why did you take no action? What did you see? What...
Well, they didn't respond. They looked at it, they didn't respond.
Still, it's a good...
Why they didn't?
Why you didn't? I mean, it might be an interesting...
I could speculate that some of them were contractors and they wanted to develop it up there.
Or restaurant owners.
Things like that. That didn't meet the RFP.
You had to register in order to see the RFP.
Okay.
It wasn't just available for you to click on and look and see what it was, so...
Yeah, I'm just trying to...
There were quite a few that were a curiosity. I mean, we certainly would reach out to them again if you had the...
Well, I mean, if, I guess I look and go, you know, if we only got one actual proposal, that means something, something in the messaging either didn't come out or wasn't received. And so for the folks that actually got the message but didn't respond to it, that's a great opportunity, you know, learning from failure. Maybe a little exaggerated, but, you know, learning from that experience, you know, it's, I guess it's an opportunity to be able, maybe craft the next version that's maybe a little more targeted.
We requested a lot of financial information in this RFP, and the one that responded didn't answer that information. So when I was talking with Megan, we were saying, maybe some of the others didn't respond because they didn't want to deal with providing that information, which is why we...
There was also a cost involved in providing, like, in the thousands of dollars.
And they had to provide also a deposit to us.
So I think that some people who probably looked at it did not want to front those costs.
That's, that's nice to know because the message...
And it will go out. I mean, we will reach out to the 27 people that pulled it originally to let, or companies to let them know that it's being reissued so that they can, you know, we, we do think one company would have responded had it been different timing as far as getting all the paperwork together, so...
Good, good. Because, gosh darn, I think it's worth more than one person, one group responding out of 27.
Right.
And that's, you've certainly put a lot more light on it, and I think that gives it an added perspective, so I appreciate that.
In fairness to everybody, it's just so unusual that a community like ours is considering selling this big, beautiful building. I mean, we bought it, I mean, I'm sure, Dicky, you remember, and others, we bought that estate to protect the water supply and other things. If sort of just with it came this beautiful building, so...
So the conservation restriction, though, is already planned to be on this town meeting warrant, right?
Yeah. That was, that was the purpose of what we, it's amazing, it should have really gone on.
I mean, yeah, why did it wait so long?
Yeah.
It's supposed to be done the next year and just never happened in the next town meeting.
Just go to the cracks, right?
It did, but no one was in a big hurry to, to pollute the water supply, you know.
So who's crafting that warrant article?
Suzanne will do that.
Okay. All right, well, I look forward to seeing what the, what the responses are. I'm kind of disappointed that we're not going to get to have it by this town meeting.
Well, if it's something really time-sensitive, there's always a possibility of having a special town meeting. We don't like to do that because it's expensive and you don't get the pool.
Yeah, no, I don't...
Stay away from having a special town meeting.
Yeah, we really, really, really actually...
Definitely.
Sometimes the opportunity presents itself and then you get thrown on the agenda, but I wouldn't say I'd go for that.
Can we, can we get the real piece of the General Law that that says where we need to have that? Because like even right now, just a simple search shows that section 40, chapter 40, section three of Mass General Law says that it's up to the Board of Selectmen when it comes to leasing. Like, it depends what we want to do. Our goal is to lease the land for 30 years. It makes no mention that we need the authority of town meeting to do that.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's pretty clear that it says, so, but I don't know, I mean, this is me doing any...
Quick search, right?
Yeah, I mean, but there's no mention, no mention of if we're leasing land, that we need town meeting's approval to do that.
Okay, but if you're selling it, I mean...
I mean, in fairness, I haven't made it that far in the, in the General Law, but I mean, just that, I mean, it's, it would be helpful to understand why it is with that property.
I will. I'll talk to Suzanne in the morning.
Okay. Anything else on that? Okay, we can move into consent items. We have a letter of support for the MSBA application. I think this has to be read, exactly.
So, Madam Chair, I would like to take a motion consistent with what we've done. I think this is our third time as a board voting for that, or considering this item, where I would recommend that the, so bear with me, colleagues, as I have to read this word for word.
I know.
I move that the Board of Selectmen authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority a statement of interest that will be submitted to the MSBA by no later than Friday, April 12th, 2019 for consideration, and 2019 for the North Andover Middle School located at 495 Main Street, North Andover, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which the Town of North Andover may be invited to apply to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future for priority number two, elimination of existing severe overcrowding as determined in the judgment of the authority, specifically to decrease class sizes from a current average of 24.6 students, and for priority number seven, replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements, specifically replacement of our antiquated science labs and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the town of, the city, town, regional school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. In addition, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of North Andover confirms the following criteria applied to the request. The school facility has been and will remain in use as a public K through 12 school, serving public school students for the useful life of any additions slash new construction. The school facility has sufficient spaces to deliver its required educational programs, except for the lack of space to allow for the decrease of existing class sizes. The school facility is structurally, functionally, and educationally sound, and has no other deficiencies, and all other building systems are operational, safe and adequate for the delivery of the required educational program. The need for additional space is not the result of neglect or the lack of routine or capital maintenance by the district. The district acknowledges and agrees to abide by all federal and state law and rules, regulations, policies, and guidelines of the MSBA, and the district agrees to use the MSBA's pre-qualified OPMs and designers. The district has the ability to raise the local contribution required to fund the district's share of the project in a timely manner, and the district has no entitlement to funds and the awarding of a, of a grant, if any, is at the sole discretion of the MSBA.
Any further discussion? We've done this already as.
At least our third time.
Yeah, exactly. So, third time's a charm. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, the next item on our agenda is a request from the poet laureate committee. You have a letter or an email in your packets from Gail Henney, who is the chair of the committee, who requested that we lift the provision that residency is required to be on the poet laureate committee, and she would like to allow those who live in the Merrimack Valley to be on the committee.
I think the two important points is this is a committee that selects the poet laureate. And it's because one of the committee members is moving out of town but still has that interest to stay involved, right? And, and as a community, it's not a terribly large one. And so, Madam Chair, I motion that we move the Board of Selectmen to allow residents of the Merrimack Valley to be appointed to the poet laureate committee.
I actually think in the very beginning, we did have someone who was from out of town, I mean, many, many years ago. My, before we move on, I would still insist, though, that they must be a resident, the poet laureate should be a resident of North Andover. The committee is fine, but I think who they choose, that's why it was set up. We set up to have a North Andover poet laureate.
My motion is only for the committee, so if.
Can I make a friendly amendment to that motion? Can we say that the committee can, can be comprised of one member that is not from North Andover and of the Merrimack Valley, so that we don't end up with a committee that's totally.
We appoint the committee members as selectmen, and so.
Yeah.
Just throwing that out there.
I would make another amendment to say that it should only be after we seek to fill the position with someone from North Andover. I mean, why should a seat be filled by someone who's not living in town if someone living in town wants to be on this committee?
We have the appointing authority, and so if we, if, if somebody applied and they made it through the appointment subcommittee and came to us, I mean, why, we don't have to tie our hands. This isn't, we're not losing any authority at all, it's just so that we could consider applicants who are not from North Andover. And in the event that, let's say, there were two people and we want, really wanted to appoint that second person, we would then have to go through this exercise again to amend the bylaws when, again, it's ultimately up to us.
So what you're saying is you open it up.
We're, we're giving ourselves the five of us flexibility.
A little bit of latitude.
I still think we should say, sorry, that it should not be all external to North Andover. I mean, I think if we're changing, is this in a bylaw? I don't even know where this is codified, that this is a requirement. It's just, it's just our.
Well, a long time ago.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I was on that committee when they decreed.
I mean, we, I'm just saying that for the sake of simplicity, it's our authority no matter what. So we can always hypothetically down the road, just vote again to change it. Like, the whole reason we're doing this in the first place, or that it's been requested, is because a resident has asked and we've determined that their value, even though they're leaving, is of such that we should amend. And we could always amend moving forward, or we could just give ourselves the flexibility now and just not ever advance a person if that was going to create a committee like that.
We actually interviewed someone who wanted to be on this committee but said that they were moving, and we said, well, sorry. It's a North Andover committee.
So I, I almost wonder if we should have an associate member.
Well, right now, this committee is half full. There's eight seats on the committee, and there's only four seats that are full. So that's something to take into account, too.
You basically have a, a majority vote, very, pretty tight on the majority vote.
I, I, I understand, I, I agree with, with, with the chair that trying to make sure that all the slots are filled first by folks from North Andover is really, really important. I also see certainly that the concept of, you know, the Merrimack Valley is appealing. Um, you know, I guess I'd look in and go, let's start with one and see how it goes. How, it's just our time to come back and, and make the change. And I, and I think we've already shown in the past year that if there's a compelling situation and, and these committees, we accommodate it, uh, you, because we want to have those people serve. So if, I think if somebody comes to us in the future and says, makes that compelling case, I'm not a resident here, but I really want to serve, and we've got that opening, then make the compelling case. I'd certainly be open to that in the future.
So you are going in favor? Because then.
I'm in, I'm in favor of the two friendly amendments.
Well, I'm going to actually amend my friendly amendment.
Oh, jeez.
Not too funny, but, I mean, given, now looking at the makeup of the board, I would be willing to let it up to two members of the Merrimack Valley, because I think that keeps it, you know, it doesn't make it a, a majority in any way. And it, because we have, obviously, half this board is vacant, I think, you know, it just opens up two additional folks to be able to give their input. So I would be just willing to say two. So I'll change my friendly amendment to up, a maximum of two seats would be filled from, could be filled from people outside of North Andover.
So we'll say outside of North Andover, not Merrimack Valley? Because I seem to recall the one.
Well, what is exactly Merrimack?
Yeah, the Merrimack Valley is, I would accept that.
Was from Lowell, I think.
I will be. Lowell would have a real problem with that statement, but I think that that is a lot of definition.
No, it really is the Merrimack Valley.
Lowell is, Lowell is absolutely the Merrimack Valley.
What's the difference? Merrimack Valley or whatever, if somebody from New Hampshire wants to.
I will second, I will second Mr. Valencourt's amendment to no more than two members, no more than two members be made up, no more than two members be from outside the Town of North Andover.
The only thing that I want to add to this is this does not mean that they can choose the poet laureate who's not a resident of North Andover, not to assume that this.
We're simply doing the composition of the committee.
It's just about the committee.
Okay. Again, I'm just making it clear that that doesn't mean that.
Second, I guess, at this point? Are we, we got it? Everybody got that?
Second to the friendly amendment?
Where are we, what are you, my amendment?
Your amendment, your amendment of the amendment that says two non-North Andover residents may, up to two, may serve on this committee, we're not limiting the geographic area. Right, that's where we are. Everybody got that?
A woman, you're not limiting it to the Merrimack Valley? I don't know that that really makes sense.
Well, you know, parts of the Merrimack Valley are a lot further away than Salem, New Hampshire. So it just, so I guess I would make the case, if somebody really likes this community and wants to support it, um, again, ultimately, it's the appointment subcommittee that's going to choose the individual, so it's, it's.
It is on the, us.
On the board, right, well, but they're, the recommendation kind of coming up, so.
Can I just, I think you guys got the application. We actually do have somebody that's from out of state that's an employee that had applied.
An employee?
An employee.
Uh, yeah, of the library, yeah.
Oh, I think so.
Yeah, so, I mean, there, there is some interest for somebody that does not live in Massachusetts.
So you're saying that there could be two people already?
I'm intrigued.
Well, if you, I'm just saying, if you were limiting it to Merrimack Valley, that person would not talk.
That's what I'm saying, that's the point, yeah.
Merrimack Valley does extend it to the Hampshire.
I mean, what's the point of limiting it to Merrimack Valley? We're going to let someone else in that's not.
There's really no.
Just say that it can be somebody that doesn't.
It's out of discretion anyways. We are the appointing authority no matter what. We can do it on a case-by-case basis. We don't need to restrict ourselves. Like, we don't, we can always change this if we always felt like it was unhelpful.
I think, I think one of the bases that this has come up, that there are not all communities have a poet laureate, and those who are interested in the English language and poetry, this is pretty exciting for them. I mean, we do have a lot, I know Karen Klein has told us a million times that we have a lot of well esteemed, um, poets from the Merrimack Valley and a little bit beyond that are known.
We have the Valley of the Poets.
We have the Valley of the Poets, yes, thank you. So I, and we could have someone who's actually just a professor at Merrimack College or University of Lowell. Then you've also got Cambridge Colle, I mean, it could be, and for, for them in that world, I would suggest it's pretty exciting stuff to be doing this, but, um, so I guess I would, I would agree that if we're going to go beyond, there's no reason not to go beyond the Merrimack Valley. They could work here, like Laurie said. I would not want to go more than two. I think that's plenty to start off with.
So we have a motion that's been amended and seconded to say that we will allow two, up to two, non-North Andover residents on the poet laureate committee, correct?
Yes.
Made, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. That was more of a discussion than I thought. Who knew we were going to have a meeting discussion?
A lot of great.
Ms. Berzoff, we voted on the amended motion. Do we have to now vote for the full motion? Or do you, is that comfortable?
I think we're good.
I think we're good. We all know what we were voting on.
Tribune tomorrow fall.
Right.
People are going to just be flocking to the newsstands to pick that one up.
The next item is to vote to appoint a chair of our town manager search committee that we voted on in our two meetings ago, I guess. We heard from the different search firms that they, they suggested that we nominate or appoint a chair, so I put this on our agenda.
So I guess my question is, why would we do it? I mean, normally, any committee or board that I've been on, or even, you know, when you get into these team building exercises, the first thing you do is you nominate and elect a chair from within. Why?
I was surprised by it as well, same reason.
Why would we want to designate or dictate who would be the chair, I mean, for that board?
I put it because, one, I heard the search committees suggest that we do it, and I don't remember which one of them, but I thought more than one of them, the search companies suggested that we do it. And then I also was reading online about the process that a few other towns followed, and now I, of course, can't remember, because I was, actually, I was planning to put this two meetings ago, so it's been a while since I prepared for this item. I don't know if it was Hampton. There was another town that I was reading, and they, they did it. So anyway, there was some precedent, it seemed to me, of having done it. So, I don't know, I mean, I'm fine with them.
It takes the awkwardness out of that board, too, to, to have to, you know, nominate somebody and then, and, but, I mean, that's also, I guess, part of the forming of a committee, though.
Yeah, it, it also gives, I guess, a person to start facilitating from the get-go, so we can give one name to MRI to start planning meetings, so that they.
Who to call and, like, who's calling the meeting?
Yeah. To call the first meeting? I mean, if we think that they would want to.
We know who's interested.
Well, I talked to my appointee to see if he was interested. I don't know if anyone else seeing this on the agenda talked to your appointees to see if they are interested.
I'd be comfortable with their appointee.
But my appointee is interested, so, so I don't know. But if nobody else spoke with theirs, I don't know if they're.
Well, no, I spoke with mine, and he is also interested, so.
Yeah, all right.
But it's not something I think that he would, you know, be adamant about. I mean, he has qualifications and experience in chairing other committees and towns, and that's.
I think that would be somewhat important, that they should have experience doing this.
Right, right. And that's the challenge. I've got the same, same scenario. So I think we've got two, we've got three people that are possible. I would just assume they sort that out among, among themselves, because we want to get the maximum out of it. And I think there are a lot of reasons to try and appoint, but I just think the dynamics are really, really critical here, and I'm very confident, looking at who we've all designated, that we've got great folks, but you don't know who's, who really will emerge as the best leader of that group as they see it.
Yeah, I mean, I, if, if we have three interested parties, I think one of us could, I could, or Dee could try and, you know, facilitate getting the first meeting called, I guess. I don't know, can we do that? How, if there's no chair, how would the first meeting get called?
I'm going to, and also throw this out, this is our search committee. I mean, if we want to assess, I don't know if that creates an awkwardness, I would rather us talk about just designating this person as chair because it's not a permanent committee, rather than, they're not going to be able to assess each other's strengths because they have to determine this in their first meeting. So there's, I, I appreciate the premise, but it's not, I mean, we're asking five, in theory, strangers, but I don't think they're strangers, because I think they've all worked together on different projects and for different reasons. Some of them actually sit together on committees right now. I mean, I would know, I would have no problem designating a chair, and just that way we know who that person's supposed to be. I mean, every single one, I mean, every single one of these people have been chair of some group in town, several of them act as, I mean, Holly Lynch is the chair of our school committee, Lou Napoli is the chair of our conservation commission, Mark Rogers chaired our finance committee at one point, Donovan O'Connell ran political work for the governor of Rhode Island with appointments. I mean, Terry, we don't have enough time to list all the things he's chaired, um, so.
Yeah, certainly, they're all capable of doing it, that's true.
I just want to make sure that they hit the ground running, so I have, if it makes life easier, I mean, and we've done that before with other committees, even with, with, I mean, the OPEP committee being one that jumps to mind as most recently where we did it. So I'm, I have no problem identifying somebody and just moving forward with it. I did not talk to my, I'm just glad that my appointee chose to serve, given that she's chair of the school committee, so. I did not ask if she wanted to chair this committee as well, but, I mean, it's basically just them facilitating meetings.
Yeah, I guess, given that argument, you're right, any one of, any one of these five people could very well do the job, so.
They all already do it for us in different ways, so I don't think it's a slight against any one of them, because all five of them are doing it anyways.
With Holly in particular, though, with the law degree, I mean, I have not heard back from my person, from Terry, but I think that Holly with a law degree and experience being a chair would, would probably be a, a good fit for this. I also think that Louie Napoli, who's chaired conservation for all, quite a few years, not just one term, several, several times, is also, would be very good at it.
All, I truly believe that's why we picked these. All five are, all five would be amazing. We just, I want to be cognizant of why, why this is on here. I think it's because we want to help facilitate the search as quickly as possible and identify someone who can just help, help lead it.
Right.
Madam Chair, if I may, I would recommend, since this is the board's committee, that you do appoint the chair, just in the sake of, of time, we really need to get moving as quickly as possible, and I think it, it should be the board's decision and, and appoint that person, and then I will work with that person moving forward to set meetings and to get us on track.
You know, this is the same, the way that works is that, like, with our board, it's just the, the point person among five equal members, they're all going to be getting the same information. We made that clear to the consultant that they would all be included, no matter what, as long as they're not breaking the law when it comes to open meeting. I just want to make sure that we identify that clear person and not waste a whole meeting on discussing, well, like, we've discussed right now, who should be chair of this committee, and in this case, I think they're all familiar with each other, but I don't know.
Correct. The function of the chair would be to call the meeting, you know, go into executive session, kind of be the, the.
Administrator.
The administrator of, of the group, but again, five members, five equal chair, and they will get all the same information.
My concern, my concern about Holly and not, I, I think she's great. I'm worried it's a lot if she's the chair of the school committee also, to be the chair of this committee.
I've spoken at her at length about, about all of this. I was thrilled that she could serve despite that responsibility. I'm not, I, I would think that if there's one person in this world who could juggle all of this, it is her.
Well, I agree. I didn't mean to say concern, that's the wrong word.
But that being said, she, she didn't express an interest to me on this, and we never discussed the idea of her chairing. So I did have a conversation with your appointee, and he had said that he'd be willing to do it as well, and that was the only person that I had a conversation with. do it as well, and that was the only person that I had a conversation with. So, that's why I have known, I mean, only one person expressed an interest to me, and that was the conversation he initiated.
And I actually did speak to your person, too, as well, and he seemed to have interest. So, I would, in that case, I would move Louie Napoli, because he's been, has lots of experience being a chair.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
He's not going to be in town, though, for the first month of the project, I don't know if that's going to be the best...
Yeah, we've had, me and I have had some conversations, Lou has had, I've had some conversations with Lou as well. He will be, you know, obviously, available to electronic media, he'll be out of town during the application process, so, you know, we're thinking there's a 30-day process for the applicants to submit their materials, so that's pretty much going to take us through the month of March, right? So, he'll be back in April. But if there, you're right, if there are any board meetings or search committee meetings in March, then yes, he would be.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like we're gonna, I mean, the first thing is going to be the compilation of the profile, the town, the profile and the requirements and the meetings with the department heads and the meetings, there's going to be meetings with the search committee and us to do that profile, and that's going to start, let's say, next week. We're meeting with MRI later this week to get them started, so at least the search committee is going to be meeting next week, as an example. So, I feel like it's important for the chair to be here for that, you know what I mean? I mean, even, I'm sure he would be great, I just, that's my only concern about that.
Yeah, we haven't really published a clear timeline on that.
I know, hopefully, we'll get a clear timeline, where Dee and I are meeting with MRI on Thursday.
Yeah, I tend to agree with that, that the chair should be available in present. I mean, I don't think it's a problem if the material is communicated online and that, or through phone and interviews and that such, but yeah, if it's going to be an actual committee meeting, then the other chair should be here.
Well, I guess I would, it's hard to, you just don't want to, lobbying, it's not quite right, we're trying to have a very collegial discussion here, and it's hard because of the qualities, but the reason why I would consider Mark Rogers is, you know, he was on Dr. Price's search committee, he's chaired the finance committee, the guy works in HR, and just sort of that ability to be able to hit the ground running with what the mission is of this.
And stop somebody if they're speaking improperly with HR.
Well, all that, but on top of it, just sort of, you know, what do we want the chair here to do? We want the chair to kind of get through the mission most efficiently, and to really maximize expertise of the group, and that's sort of why I thought Mark would be, you know, a good candidate for that. But, you know, I'm...
So, I want to say this, I, we have appointed many of these people to boards.
Yes.
I don't think that this is a vote of reflection on the code, how any of these people work, because again, we have the chair of our school committee, the chair of our conservation commission, former chair of finance committee, right, chair of CBC, like, these are not, these are literally not in the shoes of qualifications.
I think, first of all, you have a motion on the floor, you may either withdraw it or...
Yeah, if he's not going to be available, but I would second Chris's motion. I think he really has a few more qualities than...
So, you withdrew your motion, then?
I am, well, when you said that we're not sure the schedule, that would just, didn't make sense, and I was unaware of that. And I think my candidate would be great, too, but I haven't heard back from him, so I would second your motion. I think he really seems to have a few more checks to qualify.
Alright, you didn't make a motion, but I'm assuming you're making a motion.
Yeah, I moved, I motioned, well, no, we were there, we sort of moved that we appoint Mark Rogers as chair of the Town Manager Search Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Does he want to be chair?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
He communicated that, I don't know, okay, because it was assumed that my appointee wanted to be, and she hadn't communicated that at all, so.
And I think maybe mine would, too, but then again, he might, yes, but people don't realize his power sometimes not being the chair, because he has to make the motion, so it's sort of a balance of...
It's just, they have to be the ones that are available, that's my point, so that's why I want to be clear that he expressed it, because I didn't want to volunteer somebody who wasn't going to be.
I understand.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, give me a second while I get back into the agenda. Next, we have to vote on the charge for the Town Manager Search Committee, so in your packet, you have a document that Dee worked on that describes the role of the search committee. I guess everyone had a chance to read it, I don't, I can summarize it if you want. Search committee's work shall include meeting with the town's recruitment consultant to discuss questions regarding the position profile, review process, the process of interviews, discuss questions as prepared by the recruitment consultant and possible additional questions, and set the interview dates. They will receive and review resumes of all semifinalists as presented by the recruitment consultant, and the search committee shall receive all resumes and add to the list of semifinalists if they deem appropriate. So, that's an addition that we, you know, making very clear that they will see all resumes if they, and have free rein to add to the semifinalists. Conduct interviews of selected candidates utilizing established questions. Compare the experience qualifications and interview performance of candidates to identify up to five finalists for reference and background checks by the recruitment consultant. Meet with the recruitment consultant to review the outcome of the reference and background checks and take a vote to present an unranked list of the chosen candidates to the Board of Selectmen, and the chairperson will meet with the Board of Selectmen to present the names and resumes of the finalists. There's some other language there, but I don't feel the need to read the entire document, I assume you all read it. Any comments or further?
It gives them a clear enough charge and still open enough to make some, yeah, absolutely. Well put together, thank you.
I'll move the Board of Selectmen to accept the charge of the Town Manager Search Committee as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alright, next item is the warrant for the town election. Do we have to make a motion to accept this warrant, or do we...
We have to make a motion, yeah.
So, we don't have the town's per curation, it's a foregone, it's a foregone conclusion. Madam Chair, I move that the Board of Selectmen approve and sign the warrant for the March 26, 2019 town election.
I'll second that.
Well, it's uncontested, you're looking at me, it was, the joke made sense, the joke made sense.
And just to reiterate, the warrant states that the election will be held on Tuesday, the 26th of March, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and there is one selectman and one school committee member on the ballot, and that's it. Okay, we had a motion and a second, did we have a second? I think we did, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, ready to move into licensing?
Madam Chair, motion to move into licensing?
All in favor? Aye.
Okay, we're in licensing, we've just got one item to consider, and then I'll comment on the second one. The first is a two, one-day liquor license applications on behalf of Merrimack College, two events that are to be held on the 30th. In our packet, we have recommendations from the police and fire department and building inspector with a couple of conditions, and those conditions are spelled out very clearly, just in terms of access points, and again, just all ties to what we'll be putting together in a more formal package permanently, when we move to the shifting of the license, but again, standard request from Merrimack. Any questions as folks have reviewed it?
That's easy.
I'll accept any motions on this?
Overkill.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then the other item that we were going to cover tonight was discussion relating to an incident at the Hicado Restaurant, and on the advice of Town Council and of our police, the Licensing Commission will continue any inquiry or hearings on this incident. That occurred on February 16, 2019, until criminal charges resulting from it have been resolved, so we're just going to continue this until we hear further from Town Council and our...
So, a motion to table it?
We just continue it.
There's really nothing...
Nothing for us to take action on at this point.
Okay.
It was just really kind of make you aware of what was going on, but we're not even going to proceed with that yet, because there's still more information that needs to be gathered and to determine before it can really be brought in front of us. Has to do with really criminal components of this that are being addressed.
Well, then, then we better do what we're supposed to, because it could be quite bad.
I would take the advice of Town Council on our policy, that's pretty fair. So, with that, I'll just hear a motion to...
Motion to move out of license.
Move out of license. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, under old business, I have FY '20 budget for discussion. I put this here because when we reviewed the budget and voted to send it to the Finance Committee, it was 11:00 p.m., so we didn't have a lengthy discussion, obviously, given that hour, so I wanted to put it back on the agenda to have a bit of time to discuss any items.
I know. This is a mistake.
Yes, yeah, it's corrected in the online version, so if we want to, I'll just open it up if anyone has any comments or questions on the budget. I have a number of things, but I will let you all go first.
I guess I wasn't sure why it was put back on the agenda, because I thought we had sent it to the Finance Committee for review, and so I wasn't quite sure why it was back on.
Okay, sorry for that, I should have given you guys an update as to why I put it on I might share a few things that I had, just so you guys and the public can have some information that I already asked Lynn. So, let's see, a couple of things, well firstly, I wanted to comment that I really liked to see the reference to the master plan in some of the department's goals, specifically the Conservation and the Planning Department, really had all their goals tied back to the master plan, which I thought was really great, and what I am hopeful that we'll see going forward, I think we've talked about that a lot, that really, the master plan should be driving a lot of the decisions and work, you know, work efforts that everyone's taking, so I thought that was, that was great. I wanted to point out, I don't know if you guys are looking at the budget and had these same questions, I guess I just wanted to share them, since I already asked Lynn and got some answers, and wanted to keep her from having to answer the same questions multiple times. So, under the police, the Public Safety section, in the police goals, and there's mention of the fact that there would be a new sergeant, and I had asked if there was going to be a financial impact to a new sergeant, and Lynn clarified for me that through the negotiations on the union contracts, they're shifting from an officer to a sergeant, so the total headcount of the department won't change, and the, you know, financial impact is not large, so I just thought that was notable. Also, in the Police Accomplishments section, there's some discussion about using devices to monitor traffic, which I think was great, because we had, this board had asked the police chief to look into different roads that have been, residents have complained about a lot of speeding and so forth, so I did make a note, asked Lynn to ask Chief Gray to come in at some point, maybe closer to the end of the, you know, we don't need to do it right away, but to give us an update as to, you know, what were the results of monitoring that traffic and what actions maybe the police has taken, given where they found high, you know. And then, there was also a line item, a financial line item for reserve officers, that I was just curious how we're using those reserve officers, and that is to try and reduce overtime, so I just thought that was a good use of trying to control costs. Another item that I had questioned about, which I thought was, I don't know, unusual, I guess, would be to have a uniform and clothing budget for departments that didn't seem like they would need a uniform and clothing budget, so I obviously expected maybe the DPW and clearly the Public Safety Departments to have a uniform budget, but there was a uniform budget in other departments as well, which I didn't necessarily think made sense, so I...
Were contractually required.
Asked if we could look into it, so it is a union item, or, you know, in the union contracts, but I think we could relook into that.
We're open in negotiations with those bargaining units that are impacted, so I'm assuming this will be a, something that will be addressed during bargaining this round.
Yeah.
Let's just not roll them into base.
Also, just to point out, in the printed version of the plan, the IT department's goals were not in there, but they're in the online version, that was just to clarify, in case you were looking for the IT goals. Let's see, obviously, the Milstra Hills thing was something that I was excited about in the budget that was an accomplishment, so that's why we had the presentation tonight. And there was another item, in the intro of the document, we talk a bit about the fact that there was an increase to our assessment from the GLSD, the Greater Lawrence Santeri District, and I had asked Lynn if she could get a little bit more information as to why, and she shared with me the fact that the allocation is subject to the Prop 2.5, so it goes up through that means and as well as through capital projects, so I did ask if we could get a little bit more information on what capital projects they're doing. I think our allocation is less than Lawrence would have, because of the fact that we don't have the combined sewer, and so our waters, our...
We don't commingle.
We don't, yeah, exactly, we don't commingle, so our allocation is less, but still, I'm interested in what capital projects they're doing, because it obviously would impact, you know, for example, if they're doing something to impact the discharge into the Merrimack or something, so I just thought that was something that was interesting, we could get more information on.
Well, it's helpful, because every time there's one of those overflows, it's identified as North Andover, and I think a lot of people, both in town and outside of town, read that, and they think North Andover's doing it, and just, that's where the regional facility's located, but it's not, the irony is, it's not being caused by us, because we don't commingle that, so that's a really, that's a really interesting question, and good, I think, for all committees to know.
Yeah, good question.
And also, too, just along with the water issue, is also the air quality issue and odors and things like that, if that's things that they're working on, because I'll tell you, that would be one that the town would certainly support. That'd be good.
And then, let's see, I think there's one more thing I just... Oh, and then, another item that I just want to call attention to is the net metering credit sales agreement, which brings money into North Andover, that's basically a benefit of the Osgood Solar Project, where we get credits for that solar, in addition to the host community agreement. So, that's just a great example of the green community status and doing something green that's benefiting our town financially, so. Those are just a few of my comments or things that I discussed with Lynn about that I wanted to share with you, sorry if I didn't make it clear that that was what I was hoping to talk about in this part of the meeting, but you guys have any, anything else that you want to share?
Another one item that you had questioned, asked me about, which was the project engineer, which is a new, new position that was recommended in the Public Works Department, and that I've gotten a job description that was put together when they were discussing that position. And what this position would do is, it's going to assist all of the Public Works and any other department with any capital project that will be done within the town, okay? So, they'll oversee the project, the construction of the project, keep it within its budget confines, based on what was recommended at town meeting, they'll implement the schedules, do any notification to the butters and residents as to the timelines of the project, what different things will be going on, and they'll report directly to the Public Works Director.
Yes, thank you, that was, that was my number one item, I don't know how I missed that one, because I think that's, given all the construction projects that we have going on, plus all the things that the state's going to be doing, not, there's going to be so much going on in this town over the next several years, and for me, that's a really critical role, and we have pre-funded that person's OPEB liability with, you know, we've noticed that, with the recommendation, so you'll notice that in the OPEB section based on your feedback in previous meetings, so I think that's going to be a really great addition that will really benefit everyone.
Right, and it was one of the initiatives that the board had recommended that they wanted to see, so we've implemented and recommended it this year.
Anything else related to the budget?
So, the town wouldn't vote on this, but is this the appropriate vehicle? We kind of talked about this towards the end of our last meeting, but we have so many revolving accounts, and even though the town doesn't, I wouldn't want to confuse things and make people think that we are supposed to be voting at town meeting on those expenditures, but it would be interesting to follow how those revolving accounts, what's going in in a given year and what's coming out in a given year.
Okay.
Is this the, because, so we've talked about a revolving account for fields, for instance.
Right, exactly, so we have the revolving accounts that we vote at town meeting, they're the 53E and a half Mass General Law, that have to be monitored in that way, and before the Mass Modernization Act went into place, every year, I'd have to report that at town meeting, it would be in the town warrant as a document that told you the previous year's balanced activity, in and out of that, and what you're projecting for the future year. The... The New Modernization Act has removed that, but it's not preventing me from reporting to the board on a, on a quarterly basis, or however, however often you want to know that, what's in and out of those funds.
I think, I mean, not in a, I don't, you're a babysitter, so it was more just to look back on past years and just to understand what, what accounts exist that are beyond, outside the scope of normal
Okay, so on a
Normal town business, but like, that's a good example of an account, the fields account, where
Right.
It's a substantial amount of money coming in, it's not a chunk of money that's typically approved by town voters at town meeting. It's being used now
Correct.
To supplement the fields funding, the field complex funding.
Mm-hmm.
But just under normal circumstances, accounts like that would be, I think, interesting to follow and, and
So, on a quarterly basis, I do my financial reports, and in that financial report packet is the cash balances of all the funds. It's like almost a five or six-page report that shows you every single fund, capital projects, enterprise funds, that would list all of the balances. You can go into more depth because I hide columns in there that give you the beginning balance, the ins and outs, and then the ending balance. So, we could, I can provide that information to you on a quarterly basis, which you just, and then you could question one or the other if you needed further information on details.
Just knowledge, designing the question.
Yeah, for the knowledge of it, absolutely.
Yeah, for the knowledge of it.
Yep, so that information can, is provided.
I think that makes, another thing is that's sort of the parallel to reserve accounts, you know, we have a number of reserve accounts. And so, it kind of, for the same reason that we like to be able to look at that
Yep.
Year in, year out, you can see trends, and so I think it's the parallel to that very much, so it's a great idea.
And the Festival Committee falls under that too, right there.
It does, yep. So, in the report that should be attached in your agenda, the financial report.
Well, there's, there's a block for, but not every meeting, it's not hyperlinked to every meeting because it's only quarterly that we get it.
Yep. So, I can make sure that we have that for the next meeting and you can look at that, because it has been created through January 31st.
Thank you, Lynn.
Okay.
Anything else in terms of budget discussion?
Madam Chair, according to the budget calendar, it says that you would need to vote and adopt the operating budget today?
Okay.
Yeah, can we do that with what's been discussed on?
Can we do that if we don't have
Today's the 25th, right?
So, it is
No, we voted
Vote to move it on.
No, you approved it.
Oh, they did, okay, so they voted at the
Yeah, we approved it subject to any changes over the next 30 days.
So, we did that on the 11th, okay, perfect, sorry.
Yeah, because, yeah.
Does it, that makes sense?
I'm not totally, you're not ready for this just yet. Yeah, so we had, we did vote to approve it
Okay, move it on.
Subject to, you know, comments for 30 days, and that was in our February 11th meeting, so
Yep.
Our next meeting is March 7th, is that
Yep.
Less than 30 days?
No, the next meeting is
March 11th.
March 11th.
I mean, oh, sorry.
I have a conflict on that date, and I brought that up earlier, that I won't be available on March 11th. I'm actually out for that entire
So, what day is that, Paul?
That's a Monday, but
No, no, the one that we're switching, is it the 11th?
So, not next Monday, the Monday after
Oh, I see.
Takes away the whole week.
Oh, yeah, another week, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
March 11th.
That might be why you have the 7th down, because that might have been the date that we talked about as being a potential replacement.
Right.
Because it's that, it's the last full weekday.
No, I was looking at it, I didn't, I don't think, I know you did tell me that, Dick, but I don't think I put a new date out there for people. So, you're out the whole week?
Yes.
Which would then, the 11th act is the 30th day, so we'd want to meet the week before.
Which is actually
Which, that's next week.
Yeah.
Right.
We need to look at the calendar for the town manager selection, like, make sure we don't I mean, these, we don't have the dates set in stone yet for anything, but All right, well, here's the thing. We, we voted to approval, to approve it, subject to changes that we could, we could make within 30 days, so everyone should come to the next meeting, prepared with any changes you want to discuss, basically. And, we would have to have that meeting before the 11th. Sorry.
Republic 107.
Go ahead and
The citizens' petitions, the deadline's the 11th.
Hmm.
For them to submit them, but not for us to accept them.
No, so that's why I'm saying if you wanted to have a meeting on following the 18th.
But the context of this discussion is in the, is for the budget, so we need to
Right, so that we have any feedback before 30 days.
Well, could we, could we have a, I'm sorry, could we do it the 5th, 6th, or 7th? If not the 4th, since, no, Dick's not there that next week. So, these are the days leading up to the week that he'd be gone, but the only thing that has to be on that agenda is A, any loose ends with the town manager's search, but otherwise, it would just be a budget meeting, just to formalize it, so that way, any final feedback you can get.
On the 7th, if we will say to meet that next week.
Any, my preference would be, my preference would be the 7th.
March 7th.
Yes, I mean, it's Thursday.
I mean, I would appreciate that, it would give me, I wouldn't miss that meeting.
Yeah, but we, I think we've always, as a board, always tried to accommodate one another.
I guess I should put out there any of those days, those times. I don't want anyone to feel boxed in, they have
It just, the 7th gives us the most time, really, to, unless we want to meet on Friday, the 8th, but I would suggest the 7th gives us the most time between meetings, right?
Do you have a conflict that day?
No, I just, I guess I was, I was hoping to do that in this meeting, so
Oh.
I'm frustrated with myself for not being more clear, so that we
Do
Didn't do this discussion in this meeting.
Oh, you
Not, not setting the date, I'm saying just finalizing the budget
The budget, okay.
In this meeting.
Well, that's
It's okay.
So, I mean, I could do, I could do the 6th or the 7th, it's fine.
Have we, are we comfortable with the 7th?
Can everyone do the 7th?
I can, and I just was asking Chris, because his schedule is tricky.
Yeah, 7th is good for me.
We're scheduled for the 7th.
So, we're meeting the 7th instead of the 11th?
And it's 7th, which is a Thursday.
Thursday. I was going to say, can you guys
No, is there a room available?
Oh, oh no, CPC meets on the 7th, that's where I got that date, I was looking at their calendar.
No, they meet, they meet the second, they meet the second Thursday of every month.
But honestly, we always
Their meeting on the 7th, I looked at it, yeah.
The board's 7th overrides the other boards.
But they have to be televised also.
They also were planning on coming to your meeting on the 11th to present their recommendations.
Oh.
I think we need to discuss the schedule.
Because the warrant, the warrant has to be done, and you have to make your recommendations on it by the 25th.
So, if you're not
By the 25th of March?
Right.
That's untypical.
Here, it's right here, yeah.
But that's before, we don't ever make our recommendations before the elections, do we?
Oh.
That would be unusual.
Good point.
Well, you actually usually don't have a meeting on that Monday, you have it on Wednesday.
Yeah.
So
No, 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 that's not, we, we do the swearing-in on the Wednesdays, but we don't, we don't have the meeting the Wednesday after town elections.
Yeah, no.
We normally meet, because I'm just thinking of my own personal experience, when I, it was either my first or second meeting where I had to provide recommendations in April.
Right, but
And that was
The calendar's done so that we can get it to the printer in time. I think one year, it was a week later than normally, maybe your first year. I don't remember correctly, but
Well, I mean, if you want to keep the meeting on the 11th, then I can provide feedback independently to the chair on the budget prior to the 11th, and, you know, that can be brought into the meeting, I would, you know, I would respect the chair to bring that into the meeting. And then, so if you want to keep it on the 11th, I would just be absent for that meeting.
Or you could just add a meeting on the 18th, in addition to the
Oh, well, we can't because
Well, the point is to try and accommodate him for the budget.
No, I said in addition. I'm saying if you wanted to meet on the 7th or whatever
The 7th and the 18th.
Move your, move your meetings from
Oh.
The week of the 4th and move them to the week of the 4th and the 18th, instead of the 11th and the 25th, and you could have your, well, it'd be a week early to do your warrant recommendations.
I would want to give you the opportunity to be here, Dick, I mean, just, it's nice you could submit, but I think being in person
I agree. I think we always should try to accommodate one another.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
All right, 7th and the 18th.
So, the 7th and the 18th.
Okay.
And if we don't have this meeting room because the CPC is meeting?
Maybe we can get the school committee
Or the senior center has been done.
Madam Chair, on the 11th, the board of selectmen have to vote to close the warrant out, the warrant for the annual town meeting, and it's, it's statute by charter, and that's why we picked the 11th, because that's within the date, the timeframe that you need to have it done by. We can't go beyond that date.
So, you're saying we have to do that on the 7th?
So, we would have to do it on the 7th.
Position is the 11th?
Right.
Right, the same date. Citizen petitions and the closing of the warrant are all on the 11th.
But would you dial in? Is that possible? Can we do that?
We can allow it.
I could try to dial in. I'm going to be in North Carolina, but I could try to dial in.
Is that allowed?
Has to be at least 40, it's got to be at least 40 days
Before.
Before.
School committee members do it all the time.
And I think I backed into that number, that date.
Although we don't have many TVs. We can put you up on this screen, Dick.
Oh, my God.
The great, powerful odds.
He is the IT guy. I could do that.
Yeah, I'm just checking that the dates.
Isn't that the board?
It's not a
No, we voted to allow that.
Okay, we just never did that.
No, we, we voted to allow it from the school committee.
So, there, there is time, I mean
There is, we, do we, we have wiggle room in there?
Has to be at least 40, yeah, the problem is getting it to the printer and everything.
In time. So, we can move it till the 18th, then.
What's
All right, so I've heard, I personally think we should leave it the 11th and see if Dick can dial in. I, sorry, Dick, but it seems like it's
Okay, so we're at the 11th.
I mean, if the citizen petition article have to be in on the 11th, and we have to close the warrant on the 11th, it sort of feels like we don't have, we can't close the warrant on the 7th if the citizen petitions aren't in, so.
That's fine, let's do it on the 11th, and I'll, I'll try to dial in. We just, let's get Chris on call, so we know
Yeah, definitely.
Yep.
All right, sorry about that, Dick.
Well, it is what it is.
Um
Thankfully, we have technology that we can overcome distance.
All right.
So, do we have any other meetings after the 11th? All this discussion that we need to have?
25th, just the regular
Okay, it's back to regular schedule.
What date, just to clarify, what date, March 14th is town meeting?
Yes.
May 14th.
May, may, right here.
So, doesn't that, so we have, we don't have to close it on, on the 11th, then, right?
Right, but you're going to say we have to have time to get it to the printer and everything as well, so we can't
But the statute doesn't require, do we, would we
Between 40, between 40 and 75 days.
So, I think that that's the 75th day, so we could, we do, we do have a window, I just didn't want us, just double, I just didn't want us to think that it was as restrictive as we first thought.
I think if we skip on the 11th, eliminates a lot of complexity, because then we can have the meeting on the, on the 25th, and we're good to go. Right?
I think so, even though I know it's problematic for you.
Figure it out.
Which I don't want to
What's the lead time for printing that they need?
Can I just ask, because I'm a little confused, which is very easy to confuse me. This is only if you're going to change the town manager's recommended budget, that's why you want to do it, right? It has nothing to do with the warrant? I'm just, I want to make sure I have, if we, all the paperwork and what we're supposed to be doing.
Yes, this, we're discussing
So, this is just if you
If anyone wants to make a change
Even though you approved it
To the budget
Then you want to make a change to the budget.
This is their chance.
Okay, okay.
Got it, all right.
What's the lead time that you, what's the lead time that you need to print the warrant, Lori?
Well, right now, we were supposed, we're required to distribute by April 22nd, so we usually need to get it there, like, at least two weeks before.
So, we don't need to make this decision exactly tonight, right? We can maybe take some time to look at the calendars and see when everything needs to be done by and everything.
Right, but you have to do the recommendations, all those things.
Maybe we can give it a day and try to see if the dates are flexible, or if not, we keep it on the 11th.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think we need to keep this meeting going for the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to put Lori on the squad either, on what, you know, what the dates need to be.
No, you can cer, you can certainly change the meeting date. It's, that's fine, we just need to be able to have time to be, to get the CPC in, to give their recommendations, and you need a meeting to do your recommendations on the warrant.
But I thought the 11th was statute, statute we needed to do.
It's, it's between 40 and 75 days, so no
And the 11th is the 75th day.
No later than 40, but no earlier than 70 days before town meeting, you have to close it. So, but you typically will open and close it
Right.
A couple times anyway, but like, the drop dead date is, April 5th is, as soon as I get the Finance Committee report, you know, their letter, it goes right to the printer that Friday, so that we can get it back in time to distribute, because we have to distribute it no later than April 22nd.
Okay, we're ten, we're leaving the date for now, we're going to see if we can do something.
Leaving it March 11th for now.
Yeah, I think that's what I heard. Okay. I have no idea where we are. Okay. So, that's it on the budget. So, now, moving on to town manager's report, we have the standard set of reports, I don't know if anyone has any questions for Lynn? I do not have any, okay. Moving on to selectmen updates, does anyone have any updates to share? If not, I will share that, I did spend some time talking with Megan and Dee and Lynn and Andrew before he left, a group, about the Master Plan Implementation Committee, because we have talked about that in past meetings. And we really started getting, we were kind of brainstorming, what would the charge of the committee be, how many people, just some initial thoughts so that I could propose something to the group to discuss. And it kind of became clear to me that we need to, and I think Andrew had mentioned this actually before the gas crisis, I think was the last time we really talked about it at length, we, and Megan took this action, to take the, all the action items from the master plan, sort of the master Excel sheet of stuff, if you will, and map to that, the department that is primarily overseeing that, that item, or would be responsible for that item, the other interested stakeholders to that item, and the priority of the item, whether that's something we can do in the long-term or short-term, whatever. And then, we can look at that and decide and discuss what makes the most sense for really overseeing this, because when I started looking at the items again, it was, seemed to me that all these items really, most of the items are the responsibility of the department, like, planning, a lot of items are zoning, for example, so the planning department would be responsible for that. So, what is the implementation committee really going to do? And I think that's a discussion for us to have, but I think it's going to be a more that's a discussion for us to have. But I think it's going to be a more meaningful discussion if we have this sort of master spreadsheet in front of us, so we can see like the number of items and how many per department, which ones don't have a department that are just out there, because those are ones that maybe would be more needing a committee to shepherd them through and so on. So I just wanted to let you know, because I know some of us have had conversations about this over, individual conversations over the last couple months. So I just wanted to let everyone know that we've talked about it. Megan's taking some action to help us, I think. And shortly, I will hopefully have this on a future agenda to talk about this committee. So that's one thing. And then I just wanted to mention that we went to the, I'm totally blanking on what the event was. The Public Safety Exchange Club, thank you. I couldn't remember the name of the, the Exchange Club's Public Safety Awards event. The entire board went to that event recently where the North Andover Police Officer, William Gordon, was awarded Police Officer of the Year. And firefighter Jeff Crosby was awarded Firefighter of the Year for their great efforts as part of our Public Safety Department. And I just wanted to recognize them and thank them for their efforts. It's very much appreciated and recognized. So those are the only comments I have. Anything else?